Check.
United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody. Meeting's called to order. The first thing we have is I give everybody a little safety shot, the front and the rear of the building, we go outside if there's an emergency, and we go right straight across to the sidewalk next to the church, alrighty? If there's an emergency. At the same time, I would ask everybody to silence their phones, so we don't have to have a conversation over telephone ringing. And then if we have something to say to the, with the Zoom conversation going on, there's usually a little bit of a lag, so we hold off on our conversations a little bit, space it so they can speak, and vice versa for all you out there in Zoom land. I also would like to say that if there's people here today to speak on or for a project, any project, whatever that may be, it's gonna be a three-minute comment session, we'll time you, and at three minutes you stop. I'll keep going, I'll talk to somebody else, but I'll overpower your conversation, so make it three minutes, please. Because usually we have a lot of people in here, and if they are, it's on and on, and this meeting will drag on with people saying the same thing, not that we care about that, because we want to make sure that the community gets their input through the conversation. But I just, you know, be respectful to somebody else going up possibly having to say something different. That being said, I would like to have someone make a motion to accept the minutes from, I'm sorry, March 20th to March 27th and 27th.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's passed. Under Old Business, we have two items that really are not on today, and I'm gonna just name who they are, Larry Friedberg, there was a special use permit on 129 Costa Road, and Vineyard Avenue Associates LLC Site Plan 84-94 Vineyard Avenue, and that's 3 Milton Avenue. Does anyone from staff want to speak to it, anything of it?
So, I didn't go to the DBA meeting, Sarah reports, who does go and does the minutes for that, that the board is poised to approve both Friedberg and Vineyard Avenue Associates, and when that occurs, this board can act.
Okay, so in the meantime, we'll push them to the next meeting, after that meeting takes place and we get a determination from them, so those two items are now listed as pushed to next month. Okay? Next on the agenda is public hearings, and we have Smiko Design Site Plan 71-79 Vineyard Avenue, if someone could come up to speak to that application. There he is. Could you state your name, please, and just tell us a little bit?
Turn the mic on.
About the project, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Richard Smikowski, I'm the owner of the property, 71 through 79 Vineyard Avenue.
Okay. And anything else you want to tell them, because the public's here, they might want to know.
Oh, okay, it's, we're still pretty far out, but we're looking for a site plan approval for a restaurant. It's, it's a little blanketed, but generally that's what we're looking to do.
Okay. Anything from staff? Can we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, can I have anyone from the public that might want to speak on behalf or against the project? If you wouldn't mind coming up, would you let her take the seat, please?
I didn't realize he was on this agenda.
Speak into the microphone, too.
Sorry, I didn't realize he was on this agenda, I didn't plan anything, I'm Lacey Maffei, I live at 3 Tilson Avenue, and I am very excited for Richard to open up something in the old bank, I think it is a wonderful idea, the space is amazing, and I think it's really gonna bring a lot of value to our town, and a lot of, like, value just to downtown, because there's so much there, and they've already really involved themselves in all of the local things, like, we have the town, you know, Halloween in the hamlet, those kind of things, and they decorate, and they are out with the public, talking to them, I think it's gonna be a really great, just great addition, and I believe that Richard has, you know, the good quality of heart in regards to his intentions for Thailand and his business.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf? Against it? Seeing none, is Paul on?
I'm here.
Okay, so at this point, can we do a draft resolution for next month, or wouldn't that be, make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I just wanted to...
Board's telling.
We got moved on, so we'll leave the public hearing open still?
I feel like there were still issues with the...
Might as well.
That's just...
That was kind of, if I'm not mistaken, that was kind of, it was kind of resolved, because there wasn't much they could do with it. Yeah. Yeah.
We'll get you a draft resolution.
Yeah.
But that's tied in with the sidewalk.
It had to do a lot with the sidewalk, so there were so many things that he really couldn't do with it, if I'm not mistaken, not to speak for the applicant, but I believe that was where we were at the last time, so, and it was that we couldn't really do anything with it, correct? So we'll punt with this for, get a draft resolution for next month, and we'll go from there, alrighty? So the public hearings left open. Next on the agenda is Heavenly Heart Pet Crematory or Cremation Site, Site Plan, it's 3525 and 3523 Route 9W. The public hearing was opened on March 27th, and I just would like somebody from the applicant to speak to this, if we can.
Hi, this is Justin Bogdanoff, apologies, I had to join via Zoom this evening, I had some higher family commitments that I had to attend to, so I'm gonna do my best to, to do this from my phone, so I'm currently stuck in my car, so what I think I may do is pause my video, because I'm working through some service issues, and that might keep it from lagging, and then I'll come back on with the video in a moment. So bear with me, I have a couple updates to this project.
Firstly, I'm gonna ask you, you're not driving, are you?
I'm not.
All right, gotta make sure.
So, my first update that I have is that New York State, D.C., was out on the site on April 7th, a biologist was there and provided a negative JD determination, and actually said that there's no wetlands present on that site. But while I, I'm going through this, I just wanted to take a moment, because there seem to be a lot of questions about this project, and I think that there's some misinformation that's been spoken to the proposal, and so I just kind of wanted to take a second to go through who I am, and kind of what the project is, so my name is Justin Bogdanoff, I am the owner and applicant for this, this project, my background is actually in law enforcement, where I've been a police officer serving in my community for the last 16 years. Part of what drove me to this business was, in that time, I've been involved in a number of critical incidents, and there came a point a few years ago where I was just kind of reflecting on my time in, in law enforcement and what stood out to me, and ultimately, in the end of it, it was a family whom I had to go and deliver this unimaginable news of them having lost their, their child, and so I ended up running into them years later, and their words to me were that, you know, my, my compassion and my professionalism and the respect that they received that evening had such a lasting impact on their home, and, you know, it really, it spoke to me on a level that, you know, I was able to be there for this family and to provide a service to them, and so, kind of in the preparation of this business, it was my hope to be able to bring that into the pet crematory business, where pets have become, you know, a part of the family in so many homes. And so, this business is a small business, it's a family-owned business, I know that some of the information out there almost seemed to speak to it being like this large corporate crematorium, and while those are in existence, that's not what this project was intended to be. This was something that I was hoping would be a service that I could bring into the community, that it was something where I could offer compassionate after-pet care with integrity to the process, to local vets, but also to the, the community as a whole, both through going to people's homes or to them coming to the business, but that was kind of the intention, and so I know that there's been things floated out there regarding how, how animals maybe be stored, and I guess it never really occurred to me to speak to that further, it was always my assumption that, you know, with, with this process and with these pets being part of, part of our homes and part of our families, that they would be treated with the same dignity and respect and care, and so they would be refrigerated before any of the cremation process on site. I previously mentioned, as we had moved through this process, that there was an intention, and not all of the site plan had shown specifically each piece of it, but that there is a public area, both, you know, privately, but also an area where there's going to be urns and other products that are available, but it's also my intention that this business will be able to offer assistance in the bereavement process with families as they go through the loss of a pet. So, that's kind of about the business portion, another issue that came up that I also wanted to speak to was that environmental conservation has passed as of March 2025, that all crematory must demonstrate compliance with air pollution control regulations in New York State, and they're phasing out any cremators that don't meet those standards, and so in previous meetings, I had talked about the air registration process, and while I know it's not part of the site plan approval, that application has already been submitted, D.C. did return it, and I believe I had forwarded a copy to Dave, I don't know if he was able to circulate that as well, but it basically, New York State, D.C., being the governing agency for regulations in New York State, has looked at this proposal and looked at the equipment and looked at the intended site and said that they believe that it's all acceptable, and that they have, they've signed off on it. In granting the air facility registration, this is considered the lowest emission source that D.C. will give a oversight onto, and so, in speaking to them, they had said that air registrations typically fall under this business, but also similar businesses that might fall under the same registration would be a body shop or a dry cleaner. So just to kind of speak to the, the low levels of the emission sources, I also had asked Nathan Blackstock from U.S. Cremation to be present this evening, and hopefully he can speak to the retort, and he may be able to better provide examples of situations where they are in proximity to other businesses, and where they operate without any adverse impacts, he can also speak to, I think, their operations a little bit more technically than I can, but ultimately, I think he'll be able to explain that when this equipment is functioning properly, there is no visible smoke or smell. So lastly, before I turn this over to Nathan, so that he can speak to this a little bit more, too, I just wanted to, I guess, say that at this point, I believe that was all of the D.C. pieces that were still needed, and I believe that at this point in the, the process, I've completed what was needed for the site plan approval, so I would just ask the board to consider granting that this evening. But that's, that's all I have, like I said, Nathan Blackstock is also on Zoom, and I was hoping he could answer some questions as well.
Nathan, you're up. You're on mute, sir. Where we can't hear you. No. Nathan, we're not getting anything from you.
Maybe he can call in.
I don't know where he's gonna call in, too. On Zoom, you mean?
Yeah. There's enough, you can call in on Zoom.
Does he have the invite, though? Oh, good point. Can you call in on your phone? Yeah, I do everything Teams, I just hit the button, it's done.
I think we can hear it, got you now.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Pardon me?
I think we've got you now.
Okay, I don't know, I don't think it was on my end for some reason, I'm not sure. Nevertheless, Nathan Blackstock, I'm with U.S. Cremation Equipment out of Orlando, Florida, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening via Zoom. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, if, I don't know how much time I have here, but I could run through a brief presentation just to give you a broad overview.
That would be exactly what we want, yes, sir.
Okay, and so I'm, I'm hoping that my screen share is gonna work with this particular, so you just let me know here, hold on a second. Okay, are you able to see my screen here?
Not yet.
Okay, so you don't see that?
No, I just made you co-host, Nathan, so you can, you wanna try it again, maybe?
Okay, well, I've, I've got a, a slide here on my computer that I'm hoping that's showing up on your end, but it doesn't seem like it is. Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and just speak to this, this matter, the, the machine in question is our Sierra 300 unit, that, that is a, a unit that is primarily used for pet cremation, and it is a unit that is in use in New York at this time, this unit has been tested in New York, and in New York says it meets and... uh and in New York uh says it it meets and exceeds their requirements for emissions. Uh, the these types of units, uh m- most of the time when you mention a crematorium to someone, uh they they have a a visual in their head of of a big, tall, ugly s- smoke stack with, you know, black smoke building out of it and that's uh that the sort of the uh that the concept people have of these things. However, uh it it's really not that way. Modern crematories these days uh are uh very efficient in the way they utilize combustion, ninety nine percent efficient. Uh, low profile stacks and under normal operation, uh there's no visible emissions and no odor a- admitted from the ex- as exhaust stack. So if unless someone knew that a crematory was there, um they probably wouldn't realize there was a crematory. Uh, there there are many crematories uh in residential, uh you know, boarding residential neighborhoods and 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 business districts. Uh, there's there's one in Orlando not too far from us here that uh is is directly next to a restaurant. Uh, and uh, you know, literally almost with arms reach. So um the these units uh are able to operate inconspicuously. And then uh the uh other concern that that people have typically is uh you know, what what is in the emissions, you know, is a is a is a pollutant, is it dangerous? Um, the Environmental Protection Agency, uh the United States uh agency has uh looked at crematories in general. And uh back when they they did a study on all this, uh along with some other things, they they decided that uh crematories wa- was not something that they they were concerned about, that they would want to regulate it. So they left it up to the states to decide whether or not they want to regulate uh crematories. Uh consequently, many states do not regulate them all. Uh, um, New York and uh California are two of the most stringent states you can um install a crematory. So uh we we do have uh this type of equipment uh in New York and in California. And uh their uh emissions uh absolutely meet uh, you know, the this requirements in New York and uh in in California, among other states also, but those are the two that uh would be the most stringent in the country. Uh, so uh this particular unit, the Sierra three hundred um installed and tested in New York has their seal of approval. Uh, and uh the the emissions that the machine produces, as we as we mentioned, uh under normal operation, there's not going to be smoke or odor. Uh, if you go to the EPA's website, they have a link to the Cremation Association of North America. Uh, they uh address many of these concerns, um you know, questions that that come up. Um, but the uh emissions that are produced by a a cremation unit uh in terms of the uh uh volatile organic chemicals or and any other sources of pollutants that that people might name. Uh, they're far below uh common everyday uh sources that are all around us. Uh, sources that we don't uh pay much attention to, you know, whereas um a a uh a fast food restaurant like a hamburger place produces far more uh emissions than a a cremation unit. Um, a a school bus driving down the road uh produces far more emissions than a cremation unit. So the these things, uh it's just a matter of of uh putting them into perspective and and because crematory units are unfamiliar, uh sometimes unfamiliarity will will uh bring a little bit of fear into the equation. Uh so uh I'm happy to answer any questions you might have uh in in terms of the operation of the unit or anything else that I can help with.
Nathan, I have a question. Can you explain the combustion process?
Yes. So there uh there are two stages of combustion. Uh, in the uh primary chamber is what we call the the chamber where the uh in this case, the the pet would be placed in the primary chamber of the cremation unit. Uh, and a uh me- mechanically uh operated door, it's it comes down under hydraulic pressure and it seals tightly, has a a seal built into the door. So uh, once that door is closed, uh then and there is a uh a flame that that starts. Uh, and uh the uh cremation case, you know, starts to combust. And uh at some point, you know, that uh provides its own fuel and then and the and the the flame will will back off some, the the fuel will. So the the machines are automated, they're computer controlled. Uh, they sense uh the temperature, uh they they sense uh e- even uh opacity uh and that and by that, I mean uh a- as the combustion process takes place, there are a uh the exhaust will go down and and to a a secondary chamber. So you have a primary combustion that takes place in one chamber and then uh the smoke and gases from that combustion will circulate uh down to another chamber, uh which is called uh a a secondary combustion chamber or an afterburner chamber. It's also known as that. Uh, these uh afterburner chambers will uh literally uh burn the uh smoke and gases a second time. And the the end result with this is an extremely efficient uh combustion process uh after the um uh smoke and gases have been burned a second time in the afterburner chamber. Uh, then uh they will exit the machine through a refractory lined stack. Refractory would be uh about four inches of concrete uh lining uh carbon steel stack, which goes uh above the uh o- opening of the roof, usually uh about three or four feet above the opening of the roof. And then uh the uh the exhaust gases are are cooled on their way up. And uh so that's that's the process, that's a two-stage combustion.
Any other questions from the board? Or we're on us? Next, I would probably guess um I would ask anybody from the public if they'd like to come up to speak to it. Remember, once again, we're against it. Um, you have a three-minute time limit. Um, be concise on what you want to say. Uh, where it's not a question and answer session. That's another thing I I really need to let everybody know. Uh, you can voice your concerns, but you're not gonna get much a a response from us at all unless it's something that maybe he feels he can kind of if it's a repetitive answer or question you guys are saying or comment, he may be able to answer that. I don't know, but we'll we'll be able to see. But can I have somebody come up? Anybody? Let's come up and speak first. Okay, say your name, which we all know you, Sal.
Hi, guys. Uh, my name is Sal Kachidi. I live on Bresia Boulevard. Um, okay, so um first of all, I agree with um a a person that came to last month's meeting, uh Mr. Epperson, that it's not an allowable use, that one hundred dash twelve uh prohibits uses that are not listed in the use table. And so they're specifically prohibited. And if this is a service, my rhetorical question is, is a slaughterhouse a service? Can you put a slaughterhouse next to your elementary school? That's rhetorical. Um, I looked at EPA dot gov. Um, they had a table uh for what is emitted by cremation of human and animal tissues. Uh, it's it includes lead, sulfur dioxide, voluntary volatile organic compounds. A a lot of these things I can't say, uh synapathene, arsenic, benzanthrazine, benzo pyrene, benzofluorothene, beryllium, cadmium, chromium, chryseine, cobalt, fluoranthene, fluorine, formaldehyde, hydrogen chloride, hydrogen fluoride, mercury. Um, I also looked up um paper from the National Institute of Health, which explains that uh exposure to air pollution is linked to lower academic achievement and behavioral problems in children. They're especially vulnerable to it because of their brain chemistry. Uh, this facility is about two hundred feet from the building where all the kids are. It's also at a lower elevation. Uh, to me, it's you can't ask for a worse part. Nobody's against crem- crematoriums in general, but at this location, uh it's it's reckless to um to do that. Um, finally, uh you guys know, I've sat where you are and I've had to weigh these things. Um, I always reviewed the site plan section of the of the zoning. Site plan says that uh you can only consider um, you can only consider site plan approval uh if you know that it agrees with all the zoning laws of the town of Lloyd. And um I don't think you can pass that along to consultants. I think that's on you individually uh when you vote. And um I would say this doesn't work. This isn't the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Uh, first, I want to thank the planning board for your hard work and um importantly, Mr. Chairman, thank thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Megan Bianco. I'm a resident of the town of Highland and live on New Paltz Road with a kindergarten student and an incoming kindergarten student next year. I'm also the director of engagement for Ulster Strong. Uh, planning, uh a proposal before the planning board seeks to create a pet crematorium on Route N W. The site just two hundred feet from Highland Elementary School raises a number of concerns. The town of Lloyd's zoning code states that no visible emissions are permissible beyond a property's borders. Yet, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the D E C permits up to ten percent opacity in emissions. Emissions that would be released through a chimney mere two hundred feet from the school. Even if the crematorium meets state regulations, it's fundamentally contradicts local ordinances. The applicant has acknowledged a lack of experience in operating a crematorium and struggles to provide satisfactory answers regarding critical aspects of the project. Additionally, the applicant suggests the crematorium would primarily solve serve as bulk pickups from shelters and veterinary offices without significant input implications on the residential area. Cremation is inherently a combustion-based operation that generates emissions typically requiring industrial zoning or at least special use permits, particularly when located near schools or residential areas. Ulster Strong and I support local sustainable economic development and businesses and are mindful of the rights of business owners. However, in this case, I believe this proposal needs to be reconsidered at a minimum and requires further study. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else come up?
Hi, uh, my name is Megan Quinn. I live um uh ten Woodside Place and I have a daughter in the kindergarten. Um, I just can't believe that this is being considered. Um, if I were to be thinking about moving to a town and looking at the school and it's next to a crematorium, that would dissuade me from moving to the town. Some of the red flags I see are repeatedly saying, you know, no visible um smoke, no visible um like emissions. There's a lot of toxins and pollution that is not visible. And as you all know, when we have those wildfires from Canada, children are more vulnerable and we have children sitting there in the school with open windows, their bodies are more vulnerable to pollutants. So I just really don't understand why we're considering putting this next to a school. Um, the other thing that I thought was funny is uh, you know, when it's functioning normally, I read that, you know, when crematoriums are not functioning normally, they do not function as seamlessly with like less emissions. And you know, if you can't even get Zoom to work, I don't understand how you're gonna function with a crematorium. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Dave Maffey. I live at three Tilson Avenue. My wife and my three children are here, two of which attend the elementary school, the third, which will be coming in the following years. I wanted to remind everyone that the mascot of the school is the Husky, which is a dog. Um, I don't think this sends the right message to the community. It doesn't send the right message to the children. I refute the claim that the EPA says that this is viable because, looking at their website, there is a study from two thousand twenty where both the W H O and the EPA both say that care should be taken to limit exposure to cremation emissions, particularly for vulnerable populations, including children. In addition to that, there's so much I want to talk about, I'm gonna lose my place. Um, I think aside from the health concerns that we have about this, to your point that when it's functioning properly, what happens when it's not functioning properly? Is the mental and emotional state of the children that are there, as we said, they're having trouble uh as children processing death or emotion. And there's three studies that I have. One from the American Academy of Child Adolescent Psychiatry that says that death of a pet caused children to remember other painful losses, giving them trauma. The European Child and Adolescent Psychology Journal that pet death may be traumatic for children and associated with subsequent mental health difficulties later on. This is all while they're in class, five days a week during business hours. And that's assuming that the business doesn't stay open twenty-four seven to handle the volume. Ninety percent of pets are cremated. Whereas humans are not all cremated. Also, it's a growing business and is expected to grow twelve percent more in the cu- in the next five years. From my research, there's about a thousand children who go to this school on this campus, not including the the high school. And that each animal produces a hundred and fifty-five pounds of C O two. A hundred animals would be fifteen thousand pounds of C O two a day, which is the equivalent of driving from here to New Mexico. It's also the equivalent of driving three Indy five hundreds around in one car. So I know that the applicant cited his compassion to children. I ask him to consider the compassion to our children and rhetorically, if his children live in this community and will be subjected to this for the next X amount of years. Nathan also mentioned that you wouldn't pay much attention to it. Nobody would know it's it's next to a restaurant, but it's not in this case. It's next to a school where children attend. Next to that school is the Village Park. Adjacent to that is the Hamlet where we have city functions and next to that are baseball fields and soccer fields where those children spend their weekends. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody?
This isn't even the one that I wanted. So my name is Lacey Maffey. As I said earlier, I'm resident Tilson, mother to three children. They will eventually all have attended the elementary school. I'm also a child and family therapist, so I wasn't sure. There's so many things that we want to speak on and I feel like very similar is just sort of stunned that we're even having this conversation. Um, and one of the things that I've been thinking about a lot is that during these planning meetings that I've you know, had access to reading wise, you know, your notes and whatnot, whatnot, like there aren't really a lot of conversations about the children. There's not really, I didn't see anything about the psychological possible effects. Um, it hasn't been discussed yet and I think it's really, really important that as a community we think about these things because it's not just a business. Listen, I'm part of the uh town growth plan implementation committee, so I know we want revenue of taxes. We do. That's fine. I'm not against businesses, definitely not against crematoriums. But the optics of this are terrible. The whole plan of and we as a whole town came together to make the growth plan. That was the whole thing. It's like, let's do this. And yet now we have this pet crematorium. It's the only one in the entire state that would be this close to a school. I have gone through every single one in the entire state and they are all at least five hundred feet. Most of them are set back in rural areas or already are on a cemetery. So this is, this is actually kind of an anomaly in and of itself. And I really do feel like it might be because this man has not had any experience in the crematorium business that he didn't even think about, oh, it's right next to a school. But I feel like normally it seems as though people will have to get a special variance and they take the time to make sure that this fits in with the community and it fits in with our goals and it fits in with the health and well-being of our most vulnerable people, which are our children. Oh, that's what I remembered. So we said no visible emissions, no smoke, whatever, you won't see it. Particulate matter, two point five particulate matter is very small. It's the size of a grain of sand. And you can't see it, but it will come out of the smoke stack if it's operating, you know, ideally, basically per baseball of whatever comes out, there'll be that little grain of sand. But that's just the one baseball. We don't know how many base, or not, sorry, not baseball, basketball. We don't know how many basketballs are coming out of this smoke stack. We don't know how many particles are really going to be emitted because we don't know if it's gonna operate well or if there's if it's going to operate well or if there's any problems. There are, they have to do testing of the stacks prior to opening the business. And that involves excess emissions in order to test things. Any amount of particulate matter has been found by the AP, the WHO, pretty much any scientific organization. You can find tons of studies just for quick Google. Those, sorry, that any amount of particulate matters is dangerous and not good for development. And over time, those accumulate. So it's not just that one day that it's coming out, it's forever. So every day it operates. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Sure. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Come on up.
My name is Kim Goodall. I have been a lifelong resident in Highland and I have the pleasure of raising my three kids in Highland. So this is definitely a concern to me as I have a child in first grade and when that's going to be going into kindergarten this coming September. So I just want to begin by saying that I understand and I respect the need for compassionate services for pets. That is not the issue. The issue is the location. We're talking about a building, building a crematorium that is literally a stone throw away from where children play, where they learn and where they're growing. You know, I think a lot of people already spoke about the toxins that would be potentially in the air. I think another key factor is that in our elementary school, there's no air conditioning in the classrooms. And on warm days like today, windows are open, fans are on. And what is that potentially going to bring into the classrooms while our kids are learning? The young woman just talked about the pollutants, so I'm not even going to bring that up. As they said before, you know, they, they basically said that, you know, there's no, it's not completely free of emissions. So there's, there's going to be something in the air and that's, that's what is concerning. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that our children's lungs are not fully developed until eight years old. Most kids are entering kindergarten at the age of five. And their lungs continue to develop through adolescence and that's something that definitely needs to be considered here. So I just wanted to raise that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom land want to speak to it? Is there anybody? Sure, give it right to Sarah if you don't mind. There's someone on Zoom that would like to speak. Could you state your name, please? You're on mute, there you go.
Hi, I actually don't have anything planned, but I just wanted to sort of add that I'm also against the crematorium because of the location. So I don't have a lot to say, but I just have that stand.
What was your name, ma'am?
I'm Ashley Felice. I live at 6 Woodside Place. Sorry, and I have kids.
Thank you. Sure, come on up, don't be shy.
Wasn't planning to speak, but hi, my name is Elizabeth. I live on 389 South Street and I just found out about this a few days ago. I am really surprised. I do understand that growth is important, but I've lived here 15 years. My kids all went to the elementary school. It's a wonderful place and I really worry about the precedent this is setting. I read somewhere that somebody mentions that if we make this allowance for this business, what other businesses are going to try to come in and get the same approvals? And would we have to approve them since we approved this one? I also worry about the liability this might open the town up to if kids do get sick, if something does, God forbid, go wrong, what are we going to do? Like that is just a terrible risk to take and put ourselves in that position. So I don't know why this would ever be approved. I'm sorry, I'm emotional. It's like very upsetting, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Again, state your name so we know.
Hi, I'm Kim Bodendorf and I live at 6 Woodside Place, which is right next to the middle school. So I have a middle schooler. However, all of my family, so two, three, five students prior, have all gone through the elementary Highland, all gone through the Highland Elementary, Middle School and High School. And again, I'm only just learning of this and that's probably bad for me to not be coming to these every night or whenever you hold them. But my understanding from what I've been able to read in the short sessions that I've had is that it's, what I, what I've found is that this is detrimental for young children and it's plucked next to the hub of young children in our town. And so with everything that's been said here, for everybody that's done research and everything else, I also am highly against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
Hi, my name is Allison and I recently moved to 1 Woodside Place, less than a year ago. I hate public speaking and I wasn't going to speak, but I'm here in solidarity and I wholeheartedly disagree with its location as well. And my neighbor Megan did touch on something that I also want to stress, which is that I have a two-year-old and we spent a long time deciding where we wanted to put down our roots now that we started a family. And Highland was a great spot for us because we heard wonderful, wonderful things about the schools and the community. And I wholeheartedly agree with what she said, that if we hadn't moved here yet and we heard there was a crematorium right next to the school, we would look elsewhere. And I think it will really be detrimental to the value of the community and the school district and just the pride of the town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on once. Absolutely, no, no. But what I would like to do, I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. But what I would like to do is ask staff if they have any other input to this project at all.
We don't have anything new to add right now. You know, the, like you said, the DEC comments, the issues that we had raised is that have been addressed. The rest, the rest of the issues we have are related to site plan issues that are, you know, can be, are not hard to address.
And I will go refer back to, is Nathan still on?
Hi, I'm here.
Nathan, with some of the questions and concerns that the people had, is there anything that you could address?
Well, I certainly, you know, understand and they've done a lot of research and named off myriad of chemicals that are released in the combustion process. And I am not here to say that there are no emissions from the machine. That would just be a silly thing to say. The, the main thing that I have learned in this, in this industry is that the, the other sources of emissions that people are, are fine with, this is because they're familiar with them. A residential fireplace, a fast food restaurant, a school bus driving down the road, all of these things put out far, far more of the various chemicals that they're discussing here. I'm, I'm not here to convince anyone from an ethical standpoint, community preference standpoint, or any of those things. You know, I can answer questions about how the machine operates and the fact that it does meet the most stringent requirements in the entire country as far as emissions are concerned. And there are no laws or regulations that this machine would break, you know, in terms of emissions and the types of emissions that New York says is safe. And that's not for me to say that's, that's New York has looked at this and determined that the emissions that are produced are well below anything that they would merit to be hazardous.
Okay. That was just so you guys can get an understanding that he was listening to what you had to say and if he had any rebuttal or some other concerns that he could voice. That's why I just wanted to see if he had that opportunity too, so. Paul, you got anything?
I don't, Scott. It really depends on what the board would like to do next. You may want to consider just putting, putting the hearing forward for an undetermined amount of time. We haven't talked about the fact that there has been an appeal submitted to the zoning board of appeals, questioning the building department's determination that this is a service use. That will be on the ZBA's agenda for discussion at its main meeting. If the board determines to accept that appeal, it could potentially schedule its own public hearing to both hear from the public but also from the appellant. So, you know, conceivably, it could take a month or so before the ZBA decides what, you know, what it wants to do with that appeal. You're not foreclosed from moving forward with your site plan review. And you could close the hearing and direct that a resolution be prepared. But, but you may want to wait and see what the ZBA says or how they handle the appeal. So that's why I go back to the idea that if you wanted to, you could just put off the, basically continue the hearing. But I would suggest maybe doing it to a date to be determined to allow for the possibility that the ZBA may do a hearing. You know, if that's the board's preference, you know, the, this hearing could be re-noticed, put up on the web, whatever you want to do, but that would allow for the flexibility so the planning board could hear from the ZBA before it acts.
So let me ask the board, how do you feel? Wait for zoning board? And I would suggest at the same time, getting a little more information on what we have as far as the concerns of the people and everything else here. I would definitely say we could read up on a little bit more and understand what, what, I mean, we all asked the questions. Let's, let's first of all, so the public knows, we didn't take this application and say, yeah, go, yeah, we love it. We don't do that. We see what's the law, what he's allowed to do in that area. And then we decipher from that, how close to the law was he? Was he able to mitigate any of the issues and concerns? And then we would vote on either way, however it goes that way. But I would say this, I, I implore the public to come out to these meetings and to voice your concerns. You've enlightened me on a couple of things that I didn't consider. 100%, I'm straight up, a couple of things I didn't consider there. Some of the knowledge that you guys gave me tonight makes me think about things a little differently. Not saying which direction here or there, but it's, it enlightens me. But it also gives you guys a process to understand how we work here on the board. It doesn't just come here and, and we look at it and say, yeah, wonderful, great. We do listen, we, we understand it, we decipher it through the law. There's been a, a challenge on what the board's, I'm sorry, the building department's determination was on a special, I won't say it that way, on a definition. So we want to make sure we're doing the right thing too. Okay? So I, it's wonderful everybody's here. But other thing I will say, whatever you read on Facebook isn't always true. Okay? So, you know, I, I know, I was surprised too, Dave. But it's good to hear proper information. And there was one thing I'd really like to say is I'm glad that somebody corrected the footage away, whether it's 100 feet or 200 feet. My point is, but that's how these things get really spiral out of control. If you don't know what you're talking about, it might be better to listen. Okay? And I say that with, I'm here, I'm not talking about what your concerns are before, but I'm going to listen to them. I'm going to understand it differently, which all of our board does the same thing. We listen, we don't make a preemptive decision. And Sal, you've been here before, not to, but you know how we work. Nothing's given. We determine it the proper way. So we want you to know that. And it's, I appreciate you all coming here tonight and listening to that. We are going to punt this. It seems the board is in agreement that we will punt it off.
Yeah, we're no rush.
Bill, you good?
My only question would be, and I don't think we do this, would you want to, would you want to do a short poll or is it too early to do that?
Way early. I think it's too early. Since the ZBA is involved in their determination, if we did any sort of polling or voting of any sort, it would, might be mute, it'd be a total mute point. So we don't want to, you know, pinpoint people's decisions on what they may think or not right now. So let's, let's go from there. That's agreeable?
I have one other question for Nathan.
Sure.
Nathan, you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
What we heard tonight was a lot of questions about the combustion. What happens during the combustion process if the burner isn't working to spec?
That's a very good question. As I mentioned earlier, these machines are, the, the older cremation units would operate off of timers and basically analog type equipment. The machines that are modern now are machines that are computer controlled. They have sensors that will adjust gas and air to compensate as, as things fluctuate during the process, primarily as you were asking, you know, what, what happens in the, if the combustion process goes in a direction that, that we don't want it to. The machine has what we call an opacity sensor. At the base of the exhaust stack, as, as the emissions are starting to rise, there's a, a laser that, that passes through the, the base of the exhaust stack and it, it measures the opacity of the emissions as they're moving up the stack. And it's a very sensitive device. It, it will sense any changes in the opacity. If it goes in the negative direction, it will, it will automatically cause the machine to adjust the, the burn and the airflow to compensate and, and make sure things stay on track with the combustion to eliminate the, the, the smoke that might emit from the stack.
So in the event if there is an issue with that burner and it's going south, we'll say something's going south on it, what does the EPA do? Have you ever, do you have any insight on that? I mean, do they, do they come in and shut them down immediately or, and stop them from doing whatever so the emissions don't get foiled into the air that's, you know, nobody likes to see or smell?
Well, to say that they would shut them down immediately, I think would, would be a stretch. They, they are required to keep records. The, one of the things that indicates if a machine has had an issue with emissions, you know, or, or smoke, you could say, whether it's visible or not, the, the machine is equipped with a, a graph that's, it's, it's a, a chart recorder is what we call it. And that is a physical record of what is happening with that machine during the cremation process. And so the facilities are typically required, you know, for, to, to keep a circular graph. It's, it's a paper chart that, that goes on the machine and, and tracks the cremations. And then you, you will remove that graph and then you, you will remove that graph and, and put it in a file and store it and then the, um, the authorities, uh, of the, the DEQ or DEC in this case, uh, will, will come out and uh, they will do an audit and, and see, uh, you know, ba- based on what they're looking at with, with these charts, especially if there's been a complaint. Okay? So, uh, if, 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 uh, let's say that so- something happens and, and, and some smoke emits from the stack, uh, there, there may be, uh, a, a case where if someone might call and say, you know, I saw smoke coming out of this stack, well, uh, they'll investigate that and if, uh, you know, maybe, maybe it was, uh, for a moment or maybe it, it was something that, uh, had, had gone wrong, an operator error or, or who knows what it might be, but there'll, there will be a record of that. Uh, and then if, if they have violations where, uh, it, it looks like the, either the machine has not been maintained properly or operated properly, yes, they will shut it out.
All right, anybody else have any questions? John, Brad? Jerry? Lambos? Charlie? I could ask, I could have one more, go ahead. Come on up. Here, you have to sit there.
My quick question is that, so, um, Lynda and Jim Scott lived at One Woodside Place with Sullivan Funeral Homes, but they refused to do any crematories there. And I don't know what the past practice was, was there a past practice that they were not allowed to do crematories there? Because they're, they, my mom passed away and they took care of her, so I, and that's right there at One Woodside where she lives. And so I'd ask that question and then I, I guess you would ask also the other funeral home here, I don't know if they do crem- cremations here, so I would look for past practice.
I don't believe they do.
It, within this area.
Right, they're, yeah, they're.
Yeah, Tersolins, thank you. But, so I just wanted to bring up a past practice spot to look at.
Okay. One more time.
Nathan mentioned that there's a record of the performance of the machine, which I would define as a reactionary measure. What preventative measures are there with this advanced technology that would?
Your question, just so you know.
I'm asking it.
Okay, he won't answer it, that was what I'm saying, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, just as rhetorically, what's the preventative measure to make sure it doesn't go wrong before a problem happens?
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Are we good? Did you really? Come on up. I'm just messing with you a little bit.
I know he can't, I know he can't answer me, but, you know, there must be though, a period of time in which this could malfunction. And we don't exactly know how long that's allowed to go on. I found articles online, you know, in neighboring states where they had a malfunctioning human crematorium, but a malfunctioning crematorium that was pouring out smoke periodically over five years, all the time. There's a bunch of similar ones and some of them are pet crematoriums, but it's, it would be amazing if it would be perfect use, but I think as a, a town, we really have to ask ourselves, what are we sort of allowing in and, or just sort of hoping that all these things go right? And then how long is it going to take us to get it out if it doesn't work? If this is a problem?
I, I have to say just one thing to this.
Yeah.
Knowing and listening to all the people in this audience today, if there was one bit of smoke coming out of that, I don't think it would ever go past an hour, is what I'm going to tell you. Okay? And I'm, I'm being very, but I, I would say, uh, again, they do have regulations, so that's the part.
And there's a lot of things, it's not just human error, you know, from what I've read about, you know, these particular dual-chamber machines, which are much better than, you know, the ones of old, you know, it can also be, um, thank you, it can also be, you know, moisture, changes in the temperature of the building itself, there's a lot of different factors that are, you know, out of all of our control, same with, you know, I mean, the rain, it might rain today, it might rain tomorrow, I can't control that, I can't control the temperature, you know, in my Also, to his point earlier, and I believe Mr. Bugdopny said the same thing, I would also disagree with a school bus idling outside my child's school for eight hours a day. I would also disagree with a laundromat that does onsite dry cleaning because of the chemicals right next to the school. These are things we don't want either, it's not like this kind of, oh, it's all fine, because those things are fine, those things aren't put right next to my child's school. There's laws on that.
Thank you. So we're going to punt this public hearing off to the next, next month, come back in.
Do you have a motion to go forward?
Can I, um?
Move it forward.
Wait a second. Just, just for the public certification, um, so the, the board is, is poised to, uh, move the public hearing forward to an undetermined date, which means that the public hearing remains open, doesn't mean you have to come to a meeting to make your voice heard, you can write to the board, um, send it to Sarah, uh, who will put it in the file in, in our department. Um, and she'll copy the board prior to the meeting. So, you know, just because you're not sitting in this room doesn't mean you don't have the opportunity to comment. Um, you know, not everybody likes to get up in, in front of the room and speak. Uh, so, some people are much better at writing, uh, we, we welcome those as well. Okay. So we make a motion to push this to an undetermined time.
Motion.
Second. Second, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so this is moved off to an undetermined time, so some of these matters are resolved outside of the zoning board, and we'll re-notice everybody, so you'll know when you come back in, when we're going to be discussing it again. Okay? Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, not everybody in this room will get a notice. Um, the, the way it works is, uh, you know, the close people to the property, um, you know, we're required by law to send that out. If you, if you check the planning board's website, um, you know, Sarah and I manage that together, uh, there will be a notice on there that this is, you know, that there's a public hearing will be reopened, uh, for this matter, Heavenly Heart, uh, Peck, um, Crematory and, um, it'll tell you when and, you know, there'll be the Zoom link and all that other fun, fun stuff, okay? Okay. Thank you everybody for coming. Especially thank you for not having pitchforks and torches, we weren't sure what was going to happen today.
That might be for another day.
That'd be next.
Slow down. I know we did. We were talking about, you're right. Yeah, we did. But they handled it extremely well. Okay. So.
Yes, we do.
So one more thing on the agenda. We have, um, short-term rentals, we have a discussion on that. And, um, here's a discussion, they still didn't meet their requirements for having the inspection on the work that was done um, on the cover, having a lock on the cover, they still haven't met that, so we are pushing that off, not even talking to them until they, they get that inspection done. So, they don't have it on the, if they don't have the inspection, Sarah, don't even put them on the agenda. Good, are we good with everything guys? Do you have anything else? Paul, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. Meeting's adjourned.